Hey, welcome everyone to our meeting tonight. We'll start as we try to do with our land acknowledgement. I am gonna ask Heather to read it because I'm, like I said, having this.
We should chat around. Different people should do it every time. That is a valid.
We respectfully acknowledge the traditional ancestral unceded territory of the Abenaki people who have stewarded this land throughout the generations.
Okay.
Um, just review the agenda for additions or changes. Anyone have anything that they need or want to add? Or anything you want to suggest changing? You can't cancel all the things on here, but. All set? All right. We'll, do we have NRCS present?
Not yet.
I have.
Yeah, I've written.
There's like one, um. Well, I was wondering if we should go ahead and then when and or do you wanna do it now and then?
Just.
Uh.
You've started going. CSP was allocated as much as it can be. Wyndham County was awarded three, one of which the district assisted with. That's.
Thank you. Yes. Thank you, Jack. Interesting times. Um. So we'll help me remember if, or let me know, Corey, if Felixia or someone gets on and we'll come back to um, the NRCS updates as it works. So the next thing is updates on changes to federal policies and funding programs.
Yeah, so obviously lots going on. Everyone's getting lots of information from lots of different places and it's all changing every five minutes. Um, at, at present, we are unimpacted. We received a stop work order on the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, my answer in future project last when, no Tuesday at like five oh four? And then at five oh eight, we received a never mind, there's been a court injunction. Um, and that's the only communication we've received from any funders other than there've been a couple emails from DC that have sort of said like, we're aware of all of the uncertainty and at present, everything's normal essentially. I'm sure folks will see the executive orders, there are a lot of them, I have, I cannot claim to run them all, um, but obviously the big one that's got a lot of traction in our world, I think, is uh provisions on diversity, equity, inclusion work. Um, those extend to federal contractors, which we are at present a federal contractor. Um, and so I think one of the things I was hoping to hear from the board about was how you would like us to navigate that. Um, it seems like VACD is just sort of changing the name of some things, but they're still doing the work. That is not in compliance with the uh personally, I could care less, but um, we, we take our direction from you. I, I'm saying we take our direction from you, so.
Yep. Um. I think I'll just start myself. Our board has always tried to be diverse and inclusive. It's not a new thing. Whatever you call it by, um. I don't see that changing. I don't know that we need to, I fly in the face of the executive order and be late in it or whatever, but I, I just feel that it's very important for our work and for our constituency that we continue to serve all the votes in our district. The best of our capabilities, so. That is my thought on it. Other thoughts?
I think that's well said, Linda. I think it is important for us to take all of the citizens of Wyndham County who we potentially work for into account and the, we're stronger um, when we work with everyone. So I don't think that will change or should change.
Surely our mandate is to work with everybody. Surely, surely we'd be out of line with our uh, original purpose if we didn't, if we weren't totally inclusive.
Right? And I, I'm taking it that this executive order is maybe going to affect specific funding um, for specific activities and we may have to um have those not happen often or whatever, but again, I think that even before DEI became such a catchphrase that this district has tried um, to do that work, so. I think we carry on as usual, um.
Again, if we're talking about inclusion, we include everybody in the county.
Right.
And that's.
Yep.
And, and we should make every effort to, to um, reach those who are traditionally underserved.
Yes.
And I, I think we have always tried, at, at least in my recollection, that we've always tried to open up to whoever was here. And as whoever was here changed, we tried to include people. Um, and I think that's that's what we should continue to do.
And some of those efforts have been easier with some um, targeted funding, but I think we have fine ways to keep it happening.
Yeah.
Um, I guess I should say the, the only real change that I'm aware of affecting our work or concerning our work so far related to that is our NACD Technical Assistance Outreach and Education Grant had some DEI deliverables um, that we were supposed to be working on the succession plan, engaged in some form of official DEI programming and that had been canceled by the funder. Um, it's no longer.
I mean, the succession planning we should keep working on anyway because uh, I'm not, not forever. It is again, a lot of way here on this board and um. Yeah, so we need to how, whatever, again, whatever you call it, we need to keep making sure that our work moves forward and, and can continue and that we have a viable report and I'm not, I think we're all very viable still, but you know, um. I think we're learning with VACD that you know, succession planning is very important. Um, especially as we've grown, you know, we have more staff that we have depending on our work continuing and being funded. And having a board that's able to keep that work going, it's important, so.
Um, I guess the other update I'll get, um. There's just so much uncertainty and it is presenting challenges for us as an organization. So I'm sure we're not in any way in that situation, but um, you know. We can continue to incur expenses under existing agreements. We do not know if they'll ever be paid. We don't know if the spending freeze decision will be reversed yet again, this goes to the DPO's process. We also don't know if the administration's gonna comply with the, the court order. There's reporting out there that they are just not paying on agreements. They're not saying they're not doing it because they don't openly confront the court, but they are just not paying on agreements and so we won't know for months. It takes months for us to get paid on many of our agreements regularly and so we won't really know for some time as to what the status of our grants is. When we ask our funders, they, they don't have any information either.
So have there been conversations and I, I can't remember, I know Jill has sent at least one email out that has gone, I believe, to all supervisors as well as staff and stuff and um, has been trying to keep up with stuff happening the best she can and encouraging and stuff, but has there been talk about what happens if districts or whoever spend and then there's no money to pay those bills? What? Then.
I don't think anything happened. I think districts are. I would, the money would be my guess. We don't exactly have resources to go through that. Hey Katie? Um, that will. That driveway is a lot.
It's okay for now, is it?
Yeah, I think I should be able to get out and tell them to push your shuttle and yeah, or rabidies, you know. I just got a little too off the side of the.
And I'll say the same thing I said to the staff this morning, which is that, you know, we don't have deep pockets and we don't have cash reserves. We can't weather six months of lost revenue. But my intention would be to just be as transparent as possible about whatever we're learning and respond as we go.
Hopefully there will be more clarity. Um. And yeah, I'm not hearing it's a whole lot different at the national level. Everybody's, you know. Kind of read and learn and keep up and um. I do know NACD did send some kind of a letter, um, to DC about, ah, should have refreshed my memory. Expressing some displeasure with some aspect of one of the executive orders and NACD is a nonpartisan um, organization, um. But just in terms of trying to protect the interests of their membership, you know, but just.
They're nonpartisan, but they're not nonpolitical. They can speak on issues that concern the membership.
Right, that is part of their purpose. Yep. But I wasn't sure how you know, how it will be interesting to see at the meeting, just what the tone is and all that gets discussed there.
Um, Flixia is here if you wanna.
Yep.
Okay.
Hey, so we'll go back. Welcome, Flixia. We're gonna have you, I guess you're doing an NRCS update for us tonight.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, I am, if that's all right with you. I know I'm not really. Um, so. Um. NRCS, as you can imagine, is just trying to navigate through the ever-changing times at this point. Um, we're taking it one day at a time and um, just trying to share the information and guidance as we can and as it is provided, no matter how um vague it may be, we just try to provide the type of answers that we can based on the information that we receive. So that's just kinda how we're navigating through it, um, but we're business as usual. Um, unless otherwise told, as much as possible. And so with that, I am happy to report that we have um done preapprovals for CSP applications. And so Wyndham County has three of those pre-approved applications. Um, totaling an estimated amount of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand seven twenty-six. Um. And I say estimated because you know, after the planners go through and kind of finalize everything within the um, contract items that may change, but that's, they're pretty darn close as far as the, the um the amounts there. Um, ACT NOW applications, uh, the APP NOW application window did open on the second. Um, it does close March thirtieth. There have been applications that have already been entered and ranking opened today. And so um, our first batch of assessments for preapprovals of those ACT NOWs will, is slated to happen on Friday and so we'll do those in batches um, until the money is out. Um, within that, Meg, I want you to know that I'm not ignoring you. I did see your email. And um, ACT NOW, to answer your question, is focused on the cropland, land use. And so the practices associated are um, for cropland, pasture, hay planting, um, cover crop, those kinds of things. So that's the focus on ACT NOW as well. Did you all get a chance to see the ACT NOW flyer?
Yeah, we did. I'm not sure who wants.
I believe, I know it came into my email. How thoroughly I read it, Felixia, I can't honestly remember.
No problem. I just wanna make sure, you know, if you hadn't seen it, I could share it. But I just wanted to make sure that it, it did get out to you all. Um. So that, that's happening and it's on a rolling basis as applications are received. Planners are um assessing and ranking those applications and our program staff is planning to um continue to pre-approve those in batches as we can. Um. Upcoming timelines, we are still working on CSP annual payments and minimal, and minimum payments. Um, that deadline that we're trying to get that accomplished is February the fourteenth. These are for those um, annual payments for folks who did not receive tho, their payment in calendar year twenty twenty-four and wish to receive them in twenty twenty-five. So those are happening um, at this time, trying to process that. And then the um, ranking deadline for our general um, equip AMA RCPP um, fun pulls was moved to February the twenty-first to allow a little bit more time for planners to have that flexibility, especially with all the things going on and the ACT NOW on top of that as well. So that, that um, deadline was moved from February seventh to February the twenty-first. Um, and then our application um, consideration could offer our organic transition initiative is March the seventh. Um, there was a request of information, it seems like um, in regards to hiring another employee for the district. Is that correct?
Yeah, so we're, something we're gonna be discussing tonight is possibly adding an administrative assistant and we would just would hope to have them go through the background check so they can be in the office. Um, we wouldn't expect them to receive any NRCS tools.
Okay, so um, I don't believe that position was on the UCA, so we need to add that one to the UCA when we do all of that, if that's something that you're interested in. It'll go through the same process of, you know, you sending the job description for that, us updating the UCA, having the board review and sign it. Um. And then once you hire that person, sending that information over for us to, in the background check, um. We're not, you know, able to predict how long that's gonna take right now with the systems, but we would, you know, process it like many other, unless we're told otherwise and, and if something changes, I'll be sure to communicate that. Um, and I think that's it. So we'll go through the same process. Um, still within the same footprint of the district space, so however you all choose to hotel and rotate that would be up to you um, within that, um, within that space.
Okay.
Were there any other questions associated with that?
No.
I just silly had the thought go through mad whether we need a revolving door on the office or something.
I know, I know, I know. Oh goodness. Um. Fun times. Um, so. Um, there, the resource staff in an effort to just continue to provide as much support and training and technical presence as possible within the field. Our um, resource staff will be planning to sit in each of the field offices from time to time to assist in answering questions. And so that will be provided um, as an opportunity. Dates will be discussed. Um, sorry, dates will be discussed. Um, and scheduling for that, depending on the, the staff within the office, what might work for them and what works for the resource staff. Um, and so are there any specific trainings that you all as a conservation district would like to see um, within the space?
Yeah, there is about me.
Trainings regarding the office or any training?
We're technical training. So when I talk about the resource staff, I'm talking more so the conservation, um, technical planning, things like that. If there are others, I'd like to know that as well, but the focus as far as the resource staff is from the technical conservation planning standpoint.
Not right now.
If we think of these, should we just pass those along to you or?
Yeah, you can pass them to Olivia. Olivia will, will loop me in, um, but you can pass them on to, to Olivia. We're just collecting that information so that we can make, make the necessary adjustments and provide the needs for the field offices.
Okay.
Why does that keep flipping? Okay.
I don't know why it's doing that, but I'm just closing documents, so I was gonna share my screen in a minute.
No, you're, you're good, um. That's it on that. Um, of course, we, you all may know about the incident that happened in the parking lot for the vehicles. So the.
Does everyone here know about that? No?
It was discussed last month.
Was it? Okay.
It was very obvious what happened.
But some here have not heard about it, so go ahead, Felixia.
Uh, that was just an incident in the parking lot was where someone, uh, not sure exactly how it happened, but it was in reverse and reversed into all the a row of vehicles, I think it was at least three. Um, and one of those included um, the NRCS vehicle and so that was finally towed away, you know, we go through all the processes to get that done, so that was uh, officially picked up and taken to the collision center, so that's been communicated to the building manager and everything as well. Um, and so um, that's, you know, being shared because also the um that vehicle will not be available, of course, for use for site visits and things like that at this time, but the um, Subaru SUV was brought down in place of that, so that could be of use if needed.
Okay.
Um. That's really all I have for updates um, to share at this time, other than if there are um, questions that you all might have for me at this time. How's the local work group locally led process coming?
Good. I think we're on schedule to meet all the deadlines. Uh, we'll have a natural resources assessment and a conservation action plan, times the next board meeting for everyone to review.
Oh, great. Submitting for a local fun pool again, I'm assuming?
Yeah, it'll look very similar to last year.
Okay. All right, sounds good.
Yeah.
Um, let me know if you have questions regards to that or need any additional support.
Thank you, Felixia. And thank you for carrying on, um. Know it's um, interesting times.
One day at a time, one day at a time.
Yep. I have, I don't know, maybe trying to think what the saying, I found a saying, my husband loves to uh, find sayings that he adds to his email. So this is the one that I thought. Maybe this one. Everyone has a load to carry, some let it weigh them down while others use it to build more muscles, so I figure we're just all getting very going to be getting very muscular.
I like that, I like that.
Yeah.
Thank you for sharing.
You're welcome. Um, okay, anything else for Felixia? I hope uh, you're here just because we wanted to see your face and, and not that Olivia's doing all right and stuff.
So you can actually see my face. But yeah, so Olivia was pretty uh, tied up today and I told her I'd take it um, for the evening. She's been working really hard and trying to get a lot of things done, holding down the fort within this position. Um, so I did tell her that I would, I would take this today so that she can have some time to do what she needed to do for herself, so. Yeah.
Right. Good for you. Thank you.
See you.
Thank you, Felixia.
No problem. Um, if there's nothing else for me, I do, uh, I will have to hop off, go make sure my little ones get fed and put to bed. Bedtime.
Yeah, right.
Okay, we'll see ya.
Thank you, Felixia.
Have a good night.
Take care. Okay. Um, were we all set on the updates, I think?
Yeah.
Not much else to say. So strategic planning consultant selection process. Board to potentially select consultant. I hope everyone had time to read all of those proposals. Word for word.
We received a number of them. That surprised me. My wife informs me that we asked people to do strategic planning.
I was curious, I was just curious where the list of folks came from because man, they are from all over the place. Austin, Texas, Vermont, Hillier.
Yep, the only places I publicize it were our website and the Vermont Business Registry.
Wow. If only we could. Yeah. Um, yeah, I, I mean, there's even one either that's from Colorado or has worked in Colorado, it's like uh, I know we can do a lot with Zoom, but anyway. I don't wanna prejudice or bias the conversation, but um. I, we have some thoughts as to how we narrow this list down and.
I think it's probably worth right away saying that we do have a relationship with Momentum Communications through the VACD work. And, and so I mean, all of us have at least interacted with them once because they can do a board meeting in November, I believe.
Uh, except that was Sage, she's not.
She's not with them, you're right. She's with, what's the other company called?
I can't remember.
Yeah, they work together a lot, but, um, you're right, um, but then you and I have worked with them.
Yes, yep, and that was not said to be that. I wouldn't go with them, just if, if folks here were thinking that meant Sage, I don't believe it would.
No, you're right.
Who, who was that? Acacia?
Which is? No, that's Momentum. What the, the last one was. Um. I do think it would be good to have somebody who has the ability to be in person for part of it.
That's, that is one thing. I, I cannot say that I have read these all word for word. I kind of scanned them.
Yeah, so also we're just pointing out that the request is for something that did not exceed two pages. That was the, the request for proposals because I knew that we didn't wanna read twenty-five page submissions, but we still got some.
Yep.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I guess I would well, prefer somebody who could be here live and in person at some point, I and that's, these other organizations are probably quite wonderful, but they are far away and I doubt that that we're gonna be wanting to pay for a lot of plane tickets. So it seems to me that something that, that can allow for being here in person would be a preference for me.
Feels like um, working with someone who has some experience of working with natural resources, I mean, it can
Yes.
make sense or is a way to narrow it.
Mm-hmm. I also like the ones that have some government experience. There's a lot of talk about nonprofits and they're not actually a nonprofit and those are the different things. Um, so like Acacia, as far as I could tell didn't have um, a connection, but they had, nothing indicated they're either in Vermont or working in Vermont.
Yeah, I, I find this is a new world or whatever and I didn't like go to all the websites, but not having an address on here.
Yeah.
Like even, I think I did look that up to try to figure out, but I can't remember.
But they list along.
Where they're located. Um. You know, that would be helpful to know.
Oh, Heinsberg.
Yeah.
Yep, I did.
Strategic planning, I think they, they're, what was thirty thousand dollars?
Yeah, there was one that was nonstarted because of the price. And they were, and they were provided with, and our budget is eight thousand dollars.
That's a bad sign right there, in my mind, I mean. Pete, Peter?
Uh, nothing, I was just uh, confirming that uh, Community Roots is in Heinsberg and Acacia is in uh, Austin, Texas. Didn't seem like a viable option to me.
Nope.
Um, Eli Patrick and Company was the one, I think that was the one that was, yeah, and it's also, it's also a massive.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
And it didn't feel particularly personal.
No.
That felt like their stock submission.
Yeah.
Strategic planning, I didn't hear that was the name.
Yeah. So let's see, the ones that are within, let's say Vermont and surrounding states. Will be Momentum?
Yeah, Community Roots.
Roots. Wasn't there one more?
There was a Connecticut one. I just saw.
There was a Jersey one.
Where was Think Again from? They worked with Hunger Free Vermont and Vermont ACLU. I can't remember where they're from though.
Peter, I have a vague memory. Is it possible Think Again was who we hired when we were looking for help with the SISMA way back in like 2020? Do you remember when we decided that it'd be good to get some input? The name really rung about of, um, it was one of the people, Dave Schlasco. Wasn't that the person who met with us on Zoom?
Oh, that's, that could be right. Yeah. Holy smokes. Good memory.
And, and who knows? I could be wrong, but I just had a vague memory of Think Again too, from back then.
Yeah, right.
So, but do we know where they're located?
Does it say in there somewhere?
I found another one instead of loud at the wrong time.
I mean, Think Again talks that they did work with Hunger Vermont, so Hunger Free Vermont and ACLU Vermont, so.
There, and in their thing, it says something about services above can be provided either remotely or in person.
Right.
Um, which suggests to me that they're might be within driving distance, but if we can find them, find an address, that would be a lovely thing.
And again, because they're two pager. So they follow directions. They're like right up to the budget.
I'm just skimming the website.
Which one's Florida?
You have to ask this one. Also seeing Mr. Ross is like really throwing me off.
Yeah, right.
You, you. It's one of my students. When I click on contact, I get nothing.
Sounds like they're very upset. Does this think again?
Yeah, I think again.
I don't know. I think that's, that's it.
Oh, sure. The part of I think.
I don't think it's a pain.
No, it's, uh, SB. S brand. Page twenty seven is S brand, twenty eight is S brand as well.
Okay.
Um, the things I noticed about them was
Florida.
None of it, yeah, none of it looked personalized. And there are those extra add-ons, which I didn't love. It's like they tried to make like itemized. Well, yeah, they were like, we can complete the work within the budget, but then they were like, we would suggest you do these things, which that aren't somebody who just says they're going to complete the work within the budget.
It's all quarterly reviews. Is there in monthly progress at all? In an update to the plan I did.
Um, Jane Silverman looks like it's just one person.
That was New Jersey.
Okay.
Yeah, excellent.
To me, it feels like Momentum and Community Roots are
Yeah.
The best bits.
Yeah. So like, just out of curiosity, this Jane Silverman, when she says her fee will be eight thousand dollars. I don't know. Did she, she does talk about an in-person board. So do they assume mileage is on top of that or they?
There hasn't been any discussion of that.
So she says her fee for the project that should cover. So if there were something about her that oh, her outfit, because she, it says associates, so presumably there are other people.
Okay.
If, if somebody really liked what they were presenting and it's not going to cost us anymore for them to come here from New Jersey. That would be something to consider. I don't, I just, I guess I'm trying to just not have us blanket say if they're not in Vermont, we're not even considering them.
Yeah.
Just because that could not be fair.
I mean, they did have her shape. They have a background in city planning. Some natural resources.
Oh, okay. So of, of these, let's see, one, two, three, four, seven.
Yeah.
We've got which could we do almost like a little checklist? How many of them had um, environmental experience? How many, and just kind of make a little X in each column kind of thing? I at least could find that out. I'm kind of visual that way. Um, and one of the things might be distance or, you know, where they are located, but
so we start beginning Acacia is Texas and I think someone said they don't appear to have on this quote, but
Well, what are the categories that we would want?
To me, um, some experience working with government entities because of our, that we are a different structure than nonprofits.
Right.
Um, they don't have to be from Vermont, but it's really good if they understand the landscape here a little bit. It's a unique state.
Yeah.
It has, um, many, 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 many institutions that do this work. And that's a unique angle, I think, our, our path.
So Vermont or local something.
Connection.
Some, some connection. Yeah. Okay. Um, so government entities, natural resources.
Price.
We can eliminate. Big twenty seven thousand dollars.
Well, then the other one that's within the range, but doing add-ons.
Yeah. Is that Titan Trace?
Alright, so let's see. So Acacia.
Is in Texas.
That's Texas. Okay.
And didn't feel personal. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they mentioned our lead consultant Natalie Rogers is a nonprofit and small business consultant, but that's not.
Uh, there's, so there's no sense of any Vermont or local connection, any work with government entities?
No, they talk about nonprofits. You're talking about Acacia still?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So was it clear in the proposal that we are municipality or, or that we're not a non-profit?
I think it's on them to figure that out. I mean, our status is pretty clear. If you spend any time.
I was just trying to pick out whether people were ignoring something that was in there or not doing the research about who the client might be.
Right.
Both of which in my mind.
Yeah. Yeah. And there was a Q and A period and, and no, no, ask me that. Okay. I got why.
Okay. So with Acacia, no natural resources background that we know.
Is it, are, are we going through the entire list? Or are we concentrating on those who are relatively local?
Well, I would really like relatively local, but I think it would be kind of, it shouldn't take us but a few minutes to go through and look at a couple of these other categories.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
So, but I mean, that's just my take on it.
So we're good with Acacia?
Yeah, we got, we got nothing on the, the three categories and it didn't feel personal as the whole personal note.
Community Roots is Heinsberg.
Okay, Community Roots.
So they're local.
Specializing in natural resources based.
Heinsberg.
Also wealth-based economic development. I didn't know what that was about.
Um, okay. So natural resources, yes.
We would like wealth.
Yeah.
Uh, government entities.
Vermont Urban and Community Forestry Council. Is that good? Doesn't sound like it.
Uh, I don't know.
Berry Area Development.
Works closely with state and local governments.
Guessing Berry Area Development would be government.
Yeah, that sounds like it. Okay. So they got checks on that. And then any sort of general.
They worked with Center for an Agricultural Economy. So they must've worked with somebody that has something to do with agriculture.
So ag experience. Okay.
I don't think that's a quote from they don't need to say that they'll be able to endure within the budget.
Okay, Eli Patrick didn't read the, um, request for proposal.
Oh, yeah, there's a
We can't afford them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's it. So that takes them.
And also twelve pages.
Yeah, they killed a whole three weeks.
Generic.
Okay, Think Again is
They're, they're Boston.
They're what?
They're in Boston.
Boston, okay. Alright.
Um, they've worked with Vermont institutions, Hunger Free Vermont.
Okay, so they have Vermont connections. Um, any, yeah, work with government entities as opposed to just nonprofits? Do we know?
ACLU Vermont. Experience, nonprofit government education in small business sectors. So they state government and nonprofits.
Alright. Um, natural resources. Connections at all?
That was my wonder about them. There wouldn't seem to be.
Well, yeah, I guess it was strategic planning. We do want. I'm seeing in terms of like just organizational, if we were just trying to revamp like it is doing.
Right.
Yeah.
That may not be as much of a
I think a big piece of this is going to be, um, like all these changes are happening and we have to decide, like to be the big, like we have to decide what's our right size.
Yeah.
Like, what can be sustainable and effective and still meet the needs? And then we also have to decide a little more carefully, like what are those needs? We've been very like, whatever we can get funding for so far in the last five years and we may want to be more intentional if we can.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think as much as we have in the past, we haven't been following the money so much as we were, but yeah. Um, so, and I assume Hunger Free Vermont is a nonprofit.
Yes.
ACLU Vermont is not a government.
No, it's gotta be.
But they did, they stated they worked with government.
Right.
They give examples there. Sorry, right ahead to Titan. They work with big government.
Yeah, I was reading that. I was like, okay, so Think Again could be a possibility or, well, I guess we'll go back to.
I don't think we checked all three boxes. We checked two.
We checked government entity and Vermont connections of some sort, but no natural resources as far as we can tell.
Titan Proz, those with a catchy Z on it.
They work with NASA and Lockheed Martin.
Yeah.
So government and
Uh, yeah.
And they don't tell us.
They did say it. They've got some, yeah. So, I bet that's a lucky day. Yeah.
Yeah.
We were looking at.
I don't know. Apologies to anyone who doesn't have these ribbonated documents in front of them that we're trying to.
They were in the board packet, which everyone here was on the email. So.
Page twenty five.
Yep. Um, Titan Proz doesn't give you much of their resume to me.
Senior advisor working with NASA USA in Lockheed Martin.
It does.
It seems terribly relevant.
I was gonna say the lead, the lead consultant does have 10 years of experience in natural resources management, sustainability and regenerative land planning. So they would, if that must.
Okay.
Another person's forty years of
Agencies, which I guess technically.
So okay, so government entities, yes. Vermont, no. And, um, natural resources.
Yes.
There's somebody in there that's worked on conservation projects. Okay. And this is the, they have super big customers and
But they're in Virginia.
Right.
DC area. Makes sense.
Alright, then the next one is
This is the Florida one.
S Brands one.
S Brand Solutions.
And they're in Florida.
They talk about a genuine understanding of government operations.
Okay, so government, yes. Um, was this the one that had all the add-ons?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Strategic plans for water, that's in color.
Totalling or, yeah.
Totalling six thousand dollars.
Well, that's not even a total, or is it?
Yeah. Or the travel to bill, to be billed at cost.
Yeah.
So the total will come at seven thousand eight hundred fifty.
Anything Vermont background or natural resources?
Not.
So they do have some natural resources stuff.
But does it say government? Oh, yeah, does government and natural resources, but not the line.
Yeah.
Next one is Jane Silverman.
Um, she was in Jersey.
It said in her cover letter that she called and asked questions. I thought that was an interesting but maybe a plus for her. So you talked to her?
No, they, um, I had several people request meetings and I declined because we, we did a questions and answers format where they submit their questions. All of them get answered in a single document, which is distributed to all bidders. To try to keep it transparent. So I didn't take the meetings, but there were requests from several bidders. And then they did submit questions and we answer them. So.
So did this, did Jane Silverman Associates submit?
She says she did.
Yeah.
Um,
Looks like they have natural resources.
Yeah, a lot of water, government.
A lot of watershed and natural resources stuff and some government stuff. Um, I don't know if there's anything specifically about Vermont. She does seem to have read the, you know, she did ask questions.
She did keep two pages.
I guess what government experience does she have?
We just stated.
She says governance and organization is about more than nonprofit.
Human rights.
She holds a
State advocacy.
Oh, yeah. She holds a masters in city planning.
Wow, you've had.
The Quakers.
That's sad.
One thing that comes with being a sports fan is
Knowing things.
I know most of them.
What is the UMass person called? The UMass.
Yes.
But what is the guy? I see man.
Okay, um, focus people.
Contract. But that's the only mention of government. I don't know if that counts as government or not, government.
Yeah.
There you go.
So have we got figured out with Jane, if she's checking any boxes?
I think
In person.
Locally.
Not even for each.
Yeah. And a day, which I like, I like and don't like. I mean, number one, getting all of us to have a whole day that we could
Hard, yeah.
Do this would be challenging.
Orleans went for an overnight.
Really?
They, they rented a castle.
Where did they rent?
Somewhere there's a castle in northern.
Didn't they pay for us to do that? Who's Orleans?
Yeah, and Walter.
I don't know why I can't keep track that she's from Orleans. She's just Sarah.
Right.
I have that Sarah and, uh,
Hillary. Yeah. Hillary, I know. Because Hillary's long, Wilson has been a long. Um, okay.
Again, was momentum.
Yep, which does.
And actually Jane Silverman did not do the two page because there's two pages, I believe, that go with her of strategic planning clients.
Yes, that one was her. Good point. I didn't, government, government.
I was trying to figure that out.
Maybe Center for Municipal Policy Institute.
Department of the Public Advocate and Office of the Child Advocate. There's some quasi-governmental to me.
New Jersey Foundation for the Aging might, oh, wait, maybe. Exactly. I don't know. I don't have any idea what Public Assets. Public Assets Institute Vermont is.
Oh.
And J. Spain. And Jace Vance.
I was about to say Avixy Network.
Center for Budget and Policy Priorities, yeah. Okay.
I would like to go to the Museum of Comic and Cartoon Art.
Certainly a diverse list of clients.
Yeah, I wonder, cool.
Me too. Momentum.
They are.
Okay, there another one lost, alright?
Yeah. Okay. Jeff and Emily could chat.
Yes, so.
Yes, great.
Government entities. Background.
Emily should know that we're not a nonprofit.
Did she say?
Well, she says we have extensive experience working with nonprofit organizations and strategic planning.
She ran DEC. That was her previous job. Oh my God, I wouldn't say she understands government organizations.
And.
Yeah.
Shh, I hope by this point she's got a really good sense of district.
We're gonna find out tomorrow, right?
Yeah, cuz.
And she's certainly got natural resource background, so.
They're presenting their findings to the Capacity Building Committee tomorrow, so.
I'm excited to hear.
Well.
Right, who checked?
Not that I'm panicking, because we have all those meetings tomorrow and I leave Friday for a week, but. Um.
Okay, so who checked everything was basically um. Community Roots and Momentum.
So I would suggest looking at the proposed work plans. Deciding, making it sound a better, because we're gonna have to do this. Like, we're the ones actually doing the strategic planning, they're just helping.
Right.
Guide it.
Right. So these Momentum people are gonna be reporting tomorrow? And you guys are gonna be there to hear.
Yeah.
Even without that, I. Have found Emily to be great to work with, um.
Okay.
So, from that perspective, I don't, I don't know, but I would need to wait till tomorrow to know.
How many meetings have we been to with her?
Uh, three or four.
Yeah.
At least, I can't, I don't know.
Yeah, and her partner Elise um. Did, I went to a um, board development training that Water Chest United Vermont put on for our VCF cohort, um, and she did that training. She was great.
Yeah, well, I have none of these, right? She was at the end.
She was at the, yep.
Is there any reason that the fact they're doing that project? Would make it less a good idea for them to be doing our project? Is there any sort of weird overlap or?
Priorities.
Says anything?
But they're ending, aren't they?
Uh, maybe, maybe not.
Oh.
There's talk of extending them.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, I don't know, that talk has been to them. Yeah.
I don't know. Yeah, yeah, both. The ACD processes. We'll talk about it a little bit later, but.
So.
Trying to.
Um, Vermont Land Trust went through a similar process recently and. I had to say, have to say, when I read through Momentum's um. The details of their process, it appealed to me, they had a lot of detail in there and um. I just felt like they had a grasp for the work and a good layout for getting the work done, so. I thought their proposal looked really good.
That's good to hear, helpful perspective, Peter.
They have probably more of a timeline than the other one, the other one has. The order, but not the. The time frame.
I really like Phase Seven, support the transition to implementation.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's really important, that is so important.
And, and that has been, in my mind at least, was also part of the appeal with them. Helping with VACD is. Uh, you know. You've all heard me crab or whatever about strategic planning and them being useless documents to just sit on a shelf and. At least in part, I think because so often. You do all the brainstorming about what we need to do and, and what's missing and all that, and where we wanna go, but. Not the steps to make it happen and. Um, if we could find a firm that could help with that, and that's part of the process, I think that would be great. And that is supposed to be part of what they're helping the ACD do. But.
I like the fact that it's spread out over several months, because realistically. We can't stop everything else we do to do this. And um.
Emily might, now that she'd hear me scream. Sorry.
Oh, I like the fact that this has a. Some kind of a flow that seems at least vaguely realistic.
Mm-hmm.
In terms of how much time we could put in, since we have to do a lot of it.
I also like that they seem to have at least equal emphasis on staff and board involvement, they weren't just. Assuming that they were gonna work with the board on. This. So that was, that was important to me.
Good point, Peter.
It is interesting how so many of them make it come up right to the eight thousand though. That's a sign you're good at budgeting, right? I mean, we, we're the same with our budget, trying to make it balance and.
Community Roots state that they may be able to enter these stakeholders, but be careful for partners, um. But Momentum states that they are going to. Which I feel like is important to note the difference.
I thought you were gonna say they didn't include. The stakeholders. They're pretty.
Well, they may include, but you know, if budget allows, they say, so it's nice, Momentum hasn't built in there already.
I don't remember who submitted the question, but there was a question about surveying the public, and I just informed them that we were not interested in surveying the public again, because we've done it a bunch lately and that we could share the results of this year's and last year's surveys.
Yeah.
So. That's probably why we don't see any mention of it in any of the proposals, because they all knew that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean. The only way in which I would think that might. Come into play would be if it were in terms of. Um. Access, you know, or. Um, how we conduct our business, that the public may or may not be happy with not like what our natural resource concerns are, because I would totally agree with it. That's. And done a lot, which it needs to be.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um. Any other thoughts or considerations on, because it sounds to me we've narrowed it down to two.
It sounds to me like everybody's talking about momentum and sort of not about the other one.
Yeah.
So unless somebody wants to stand up for Community Roots.
I like their name. That's it.
She asked you to have the sweet thing, I love it.
I did. How did you write those things today?
Uh, it, and it's, there are, there's, you know, silly things that get like fonts in their presentation and.
There's the bolding, a lot of people bolded.
Yeah.
Like.
That kind of stuff.
To the point where it's crazy.
Yes.
I hate that.
Is there anything in our procurement policy or whatever contracting policy or whatever that we need to? Adhere to in terms of. How we proceed, but we're not.
Technically subject to our procurement policy if it stays below fifteen, fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay, I couldn't remember the amount.
We have a conflict of interest policy, but I don't think anything here would. Just because we've worked with them in a different context.
Yeah, I mean, I, I did wanna make it. Clear or make sure that everyone remembered that they were working already with VACD, but in my mind. That could not speed up our process, but. Um, make it a little more efficient, because they have some background and I'm sure that Emily is aware of. Even though it was Sage that met with us, that information is. Out there as to some of the thoughts that came out of our district. Although, we may have it all just together at this point, not specifically, no resources, but. Um, but I also just, I guess in terms of conflict of interest, wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that they are currently working with the ACD. But I don't see that myself as a drawback, I see it as an asset.
Okay.
And just, um. My experience, Corey's, was there also, I don't remember, her and Isabel went to the annual meeting this year.
Just to the second day, not to that day with the consultants.
Um, you know, working with them, they are very. Much into. Nice meeting processes and including people and making sure everyone is heard, like, they make sure that Jeff said something and. You know, I really liked that part of how they. Work, so, anyway. I have no real vested interest in opening them, just giving some perspective to. Okay, um, so I believe where we see for this would someone would make a motion to. Um. Approve. One of these organizations being. Folks that we go to work with. And. We can make a motion, have more discussion, or we can keep looking if you want more time to just read through.
I move that we uh. Select uh. The proposal from Momentum.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thank you. Uh, next we move on to our revised budget. Board to potentially approve the revised budget. Which follows right after all these. Thirty questions.
Now, let's see if I can get this right, another share screen. Let's see if we can go on.
You want to, they pay you on the left.
Tell that you're right, yeah.
Yes.
Over there. And folks online see that.
Yep.
Okay. We got it both places. Okay, so this is the second revision to the FY twenty-five. Just. Additional and new information about brands, either because we've done with them, finished billing to them, so we have the final amount, or we have new awards, or we have awards that are underperforming, where we're anticipating where we'll land, so. Um, the notable change is adding in donations that we received with the annual gathering registrations, um. That's the enhanced survivorship grant for trees for shame sites that Isabel secured. As well as the project development grant that Isabel gave us. Um, and the micro wetlands planning and prioritization that Isabel's doing. Um, this is the greeter programs and water chestnut, we came in way under budget, because we just wanted to spend the money this year, so expenses are down related to that and, you know, down related to that. Um, same reason for Lake Reponda and Varma La Fonda, only paying five hundred and five thousand.
And what was that again, Corey's, what did you do?
Um, we couldn't spend the money, we, between the water chestnut work and the greeters, um, we have one of our water chestnut employees. Look at us.
Okay.
Not work at all, and then it just seemed like. Um, we had a lot of days we couldn't get on the water.
River protection issues and then lack of. Putting this delicately, match from organizations that was promised, but did not happen, so it was harder to get coordination to work. Because I would try to coordinate it so that X person can be there and the next person would not be there, which happens.
Um, if Granton aid happens again this year, um, it's a little bit late now, so I'm a little nervous about why we haven't heard, but um. Based on the conversations we've had, I would expect that we're gonna hire, I think I talked about this last one, three full-time people for the summer, and they'll just do this all the time. And we will very much guarantee that we spend the money we're given, because it's different when you have full-time people. Than when you're juggling um. People with other day jobs.
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay, so that's the same reason for.
That's for the greeter program or for the?
Same, same thing. Same grant.
One umbrella.
So how do three people cover? Is, is.
No, no, sorry.
Addition to the greeters.
It's the same funding source, they're different people.
Okay. And does that mean you would not also use volunteers for the water?
No, we would still take volunteers, in fact, we'll need them, because if the state's already more money, we'll need to match.
Yeah, okay.
But we're gonna have to get creative about where we find the volunteers.
Okay.
I thought the salmon bomb program not gonna pay nothing.
That's this coming year. That's the, the upcoming FY twenty-six.
Oh, just FY twenty-five.
Yeah, that greeter season's over. Um, yeah, um, that was a bummer, I didn't know. So I didn't know that money had even been secured, that's why it wasn't in the budget right here, um, and it sounds like AHMC that. Community Center um circulated the petitions and got approval for that thousand dollars, did that all by themselves. And then this year, I didn't know that was the process, so. I submitted, I just reached out to say, do you wanna contribute a thousand again, and they're like, oh yeah, sure, and then they followed up with. Eight hours later, and like, sorry, we just checked in with the town clerk and we can't do it without a petition, you missed the deadline for a petition. So.
Okay.
Not a huge deal, what a bummer.
Mm-hmm.
Um, little bit extra in the Brattlewell Farmers Market preliminary design, because I reached out to Mark kind of as we were closing that grant out. And said, hey, the grant ended months ago, but we actually did incur additional expense, any chance we can spend it, and he said, yeah, that's, so we did a quick amendment. I know, I feel like that these times are gonna be, we're gonna look back on the time when everyone had money. Longingly.
Mm-hmm, well, at least in part, just like, yep, sure, that's great.
Yeah. Because they had money left in the grant, the parent grant agreement was ending, so.
That's my, my discussion.
Yeah, so they wanted to spend that money. Um, Dumerson Covered Bridge was the one that was gonna all happen in FY twenty-four, and then it ended up getting pushed into July and August, so some of the money falls in this year. That's that thirty-two thousand fifty-six dollars seventy-nine cents, same thing with the burn removal, preliminary design. Um, same thing to, oh, we came in a little bit under budget on the Lake Reponda preliminary design. Um, Vermont Community Foundation, um. Ended up, they just had us check last week unprompted, um, but for the remaining amount on that agreement. So that all falls in this year and then. We decide how to account for that at the end of the year, because we may or may not spend it all before the end of the fiscal year, and there's a way to move that money into the next fiscal year. Um. American Farm Land Trust, RCPP, um, that's funding that supports Heather in um, May doing conservation planning work and outreach around that funding source. Um, I just moved the amount up a little bit in response to the rate that we're using it now, which is good. Um, in theory, we have fifty thousand a year, and we've yet to come close to using all of that. Um, AFT has voiced that they plan to. Stand behind the amount of money they pledged us, so I think that we can.
And.
Use it.
Brush my memory of.
They're a nonprofit, but the money is absolutely, it's RCPP, so it's on our CS money, at present, RCPP is unaffected. Um, Sarah has an RCPP in Orleans County too, and she just said the other day that no impacts yet. Right.
Yeah.
Um. National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, this is the nitrogen project, so I just moved, I lowered the estimate a bunch, um. Based on how this year's going in so far, it's hard for me to imagine us spending one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. If I'm wrong, that would be great.
Can't we figure out some way to. Bring some of our other projects into.
I, I know, it's, it's tough to have this huge funding that we've been struggling to use, um. You know, I'm wondering if there's any chance, assuming we don't. Lose it, um, if some of the partners who turned us down, like, their tune might change, if they suddenly are worrying about me.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe, but I thought for the sake of, I'd rather come in at the end of the year and go, oh, wow, we, we actually have one, and we thought we had, think the other way around, so.
Yeah.
Um, still. Um, still grass, uh, this has to do with the use of Sisma. I don't know when they're gonna use their portion, the upper valley Sisma. Um, as of right now, they have not finished their previous agreement. That they're still spending down, so I'm guessing it's gonna fall after this fiscal year ends, so I just moved it out of there and also all the contractor amount. Um, those are, uh, N A C D technical assistance. Um. That's the kind, basically on the current rate we're using it. Um, I'm just guessing we'll end up using some of it into F Y twenty six. Um, we do know that that funding source, although it won't be White River, N R C D, it will be the A C D. But that funding source has already been awarded and we've heard through Jill that that's fine. We don't have to worry about that for the long, so. Um.
Remember the specifics of it, but somehow it's not. Funded this.
It's not I R A.
Right.
I know that. Um, so yeah, then result is that our total income's down. About fifty thousand dollars. Um, and then changes in expenses, uh, liability and auto insurance, just based with our renewal in January, first one up a little bit. Um. Advertising and website went up a little bit, uh, includes the Sisma website that we're hosting. Now, so we ran us, there will be a seven days ad for the plant sale that we'll do later this spring in Burner Shit with all the other districts. Um, dues and subscriptions, uh, the S C T dues went up a little bit. Um, registration and meeting expenses that include the annual gathering. Um, lab fees because we are doing nutrient management plan. There is a lot of soil testing and some manure sampling. We have to pay for that. Bank fees, we had to do a stop order and check. Um, computer supplies and software includes, some of this got moved around a little bit. Um, cell phones were buried under project expense because they're funded by a grant from N R C C. The Exiva Award, but I think it is more transparent makes more sense to put it kind of where it goes in terms of the type of expense that it is, which it is. To me, it feels like computer supplies and software. Um, and then also.
Somehow, when you do your, whatever that tracks back to that.
Because we still sort by class.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, my thinking has been concerned about when we want to justify our global rate or indirect rate. There's one class now where you can see like all of that kind of administrative overhead stuff. Yeah, um, computer supplies and software also includes a new computer Garrett, which we bought earlier this year and then for the admin assistant, assuming they have one. Um, logo and promotional materials, both are budgeted anywhere, or I can't figure out what I thought I had it under. Um, printing to the annual report is new. Salaries are down a bit from that to the greeters and the invasive species technician, not working as much as we planned on them working. Um, some of that's the late start dates for May and also the goal was to have the admin assistant start at the halfway point in year this February, so.
Right.
We wind up spending less than we planned on there. Um, retirement's up because uh, we approved matching on four one Ks. Um, at the, we'll say October board meeting, um, approved the policy, but we didn't pass a revised budget, so that's what that cost us. How many fifteen hundreds, the stop fee for the actual four one K, that's a one-time expense, the rest of that's three percent of their minimum wages, assuming everyone takes the default. Um. Whoa, and I landed wherever there.
The mouse has a mind of its own.
Okay, um, like it's that a little bit, that's just a percentage of salary. Um, I don't play that workers count up, um, actually lost them, I thought, and I think it's because I had, I think I had a little mix up of what belonged in auto. Or our liability insurance, because they come on the same belt. So one went up, one went down. Should be more accurate now.
Well, is, and is your workers comp based on payroll?
It is.
But, but your payroll is.
I assume you're saying down from our estimate.
Right.
Yeah. Um, consulting and engineering, this is the Lake Reponda design project that was not. Um. Not in the budget before, also includes, um. The Jacksonville burn removal work and the Donnerston infiltration step work, the engineering work that took place after July one. Um, construction, a part of that work that took place after July and then I'm done with Stan. Um, you know. Other contractual, and that's why I took all that money out of the one ounce on features one project, the nitrogen project. That's because we are struggling to find partners who can spend their money, so I lowered that accordingly. Um, office supplies, here's one, so I believe promotional materials was under office supplies before, which. Doesn't really fit. It's more than other admins, so I moved it out of there, so went from fifty two hundred to fifteen hundred. Um. Project materials was downgraded a little bit and I don't remember why.
Maybe is that connected to the? Nitrogen.
Um, oh, the Exil capacity upgrades. They were under here, those are the cell phones, some of their stuff, I thought it was more transparent. Um. Equipment, um, we're still hoping to go get a truck, but at this point it will be for fewer months, so toss a lot of money on the bill of the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And then I just took what the balance was and said that we would hold on to it, hold on a little bit, so that is a balanced budget. Any questions?
How do you stay like?
There have been times where I thought it would be good if we had like a finance some committee that could kind of dig into some of this stuff, so it wasn't, it's so, you know, it's pretty dullable and new material. But we're a small enough board that I don't know if that's really productive or not. And a lot of nonprofits have like a board of fifteen people and then they have tiny little committees that deal with that.
Um, questions?
Comments? So the Marlboro guy, the film fall, so he just didn't know what was going on? Is that what happened? Was call I sent to you?
Remind me.
The, about the thousand dollars, she's. So he just.
So I sent it.
Yeah, he didn't know.
Yeah, he was very apologetic when he called me back. He was like, I realize I'm the one who asked you to send this, but I was wrong.
He didn't come up with somewhere else.
Well, it was like the weirdest call. I, I thought it was spam because they were like, so we give you guys a thousand dollars each year and I was like.
I like how it's like each year they did it one time.
Well, it's because their bookkeeper switched and that's where the confusion happened, so that makes.
No. Peter or just. So again, maybe motion to approve the revised. Or accept.
Accept, I think we accept. The. So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? I'll just say, Corey, thank you for your work on this. I'm thinking as you were clicking down through and running off all this stuff again, just. It's been, it's great to see. All that you learned, because I mean.
I was thinking that too. I was, you weren't hired knowing this.
Yeah.
No. I wish my household budget was this like ordering.
Well, when you get the administrative assistant to do this, then you might have time to do. Oh, Jeff, I'm sorry. Um, okay. All those in favor?
Alright.
Um, anyone opposed? Draft administrative assistant position description, board to potentially approve new position. Description. I believe.
Put it on the screen too. So I share screen. Whoa, that was neat. Okay, um, so yeah, very open to edits or ideas about how this should look different. It was, I had not written one for a job that's just really like outside of my area of expertise a little bit. It's not an natural resources job, it's a clerical job. Um, I did get really excited writing it when I just started to think about all the hours that I do this, that I could do other things. So, could be amazing. I hope it isn't a thing where we hired and in six months we can't afford it anymore and that would be a bummer.
But a beautiful six month.
Yeah.
At least, yeah, although I have a stack of plant sale orders like this that I'm just not even touched. And I was like, that'd take five minutes to explain how to do that job and then they'd be busy for a while. If by some chance we could get them onboard by the end.
So it says up to twenty hours a week.
Yeah, I guess. Should I just say twenty hours? I mean, that's a little.
I mean.
So people don't think they're.
Well, you know how long this stuff takes you.
Yeah, I'll be really curious. Like, I figure it'll be adding a little bit of the time as they learn how to do all the steps and hopefully they can be a little bit in the loop about like what's realistic.
So is that why to keep it up too? I, I mean. If someone applies thinking they're going to get twenty hours a week and there's only ten hours of.
No, there's twenty hours of work. I think the issue will be, we'll be having to scale back some of the workload once we get a feel for what it takes. To be like, because I don't know if we can afford more than twenty hours necessarily, but.
I wouldn't, I don't think right now. I mean, unless something really shifts back.
Yeah, I thought twenty hours was a good fit too, because a person could pair it with another job doing. Uh, very similar work for an organization.
Okay, well maybe the greeter program.
Or that.
It says somebody else is hiring. Yeah, I miss the same. Who is that? Oh, it's from our land trust. Are you guys hiring someone?
Oh, we're hiring all sorts of folks. We're looking for a bookkeeper and an accountant and a land person.
Okay.
So I didn't call this person a bookkeeper because the duties go beyond that, but it is a lot of bookkeeping that I'm hoping to give them.
Um, didn't use the word keeping in here though.
Uh, I also, I don't know that I need somebody, I mean, it'd be cool if somebody was like a QuickBooks Pro. Applied, but I don't think that's a priority. I think just somebody who is smart and organized. That can be trained because this is all very, like you can train anybody to do these things.
And if you got somebody who was a QuickBooks Pro, is this the pay scale that they'd be like, they'd be looking in?
Good question. I have no.
I don't know.
I, I was thinking that, that if you get anyone with much. Accounting or bookkeeping skill. Uh, yes. If you can get someone for twenty one dollars an hour, that would be a good question, but it is a good hand.
Are you gonna be able to train them? Um, with them only coming in once a week?
Um, we might meet more than that at first. I'm guessing we'll have to. Um, although like I said, the plant sale could be. You're gonna do this for a little bit. Hmm, um. And the issue with not having them in the office more is that we just don't have the space, like it is pretty rough in there with. I mean, fortunately, we're pretty rarely that all of us are there. Almost we're meeting, uh, but yeah, I hate to put a person in there, especially for, I know, I know you, I think you work with most of anybody. Hard to have more people in the old carrots there almost every day, right?
You're there a lot, Eric.
Yeah. Um.
Yeah.
Uh, questions, thoughts?
Um, this is a, it's not just a title or whatever, but um, I never am sure. Like the summary. And even the duties and responsibilities, use the word will. Um, and there were a couple of them, I think.
Did I say support? So you.
For whether it should be will or may. Like, other duties will include preparing both mailings, uh, I mean. And I guess maybe I'm getting confused with when you do shall or may. Maybe will is, maybe will is okay here.
That's certainly, yeah.
Take it out.
Other duties include preparing both mailings and mailing newsletters, stuff that is maintained during the fiscal class.
Okay, I just, yeah, I, it could be overwhelming. I mean, for twenty hours to think that they will be doing all, every one of these things. But.
But these things, like the mailings don't happen weekly.
Should I say we'll assist with? Does that seem less like?
Do you want them to eventually do?
I do.
So, yeah, so. No, I think that's fine. I think it was, it was more the last one, I think that. Was, yeah.
Uh, trying to think if there are any other.
Oh, one question I had. How often is the night and weekend?
Uh, I originally thought coming to board meetings. Is there anything else that we would need them to?
Do we need them to come to the board meeting?
Well, that's one of the proposed parts of their job duties could be facilitating like running the three ring circus.
Ah, okay.
Be nice.
And the plant sale takes those weekends.
It does. That might be the only weekend day that I really feel strongly about them participating in.
I, because I almost feel like some, I'm saying some weekend, we, we make decision. Or comments makes it sound more regular, like occasional.
Am I limited?
Unlimited, yeah.
Yeah.
And my thinking was that we would have them come to staff meetings. So they can start to know all of us are up to and. As they become more competent, they can start to assist with some things like scheduling site visits and I'm thinking a little bit like a program system.
Any other thoughts?
I think it's, I think it sounds good. Um, I mean, obviously, they're not gonna take on all of these things immediately.
Um, folks, nobody does. And there's a lot of training going in there. But some of the things like, okay, the plant sale takes a huge amount of time for a while.
Yeah.
And then you don't see it for. Months.
Right, yeah.
Um, so. You know, there's a sort of a seasonal round to this process. Which would probably be comforting for someone to realize.
Yeah.
But I don't know that that needs to be. In here. I mean, that's the thing that I probably in the interview. Would be a better place to say, well, you know, this is seasonal here and that's seasonal there and this, on the other hand, we do have to be paid regularly, so.
Right.
You know.
Yeah.
I think it sounds pretty good. I hope we can get somebody that can do all that stuff.
And I'll be really curious what.
And are willing to do it for that kind of money, because I just don't know.
Um, other question I had was, it says with predictable pay increases and. Do we put them on the same pay scale? That we have like that tier one pay scale. Don't know what it tops out at, I mean, top out at thirty six dollars an hour, I can worry about if we can afford that.
Yeah, but how long down the road would that be?
Ten years.
I think the lands get medical.
I guess, one question would be. Can we not put them on that pace still?
I think they need to be, um, I guess I don't feel great about.
No, no, I mean, is it okay for us to not have them or buy our whatever?
We would need to revise our I M S.
And.
I mean, we, we, we assign. It's tough because they're a permanent employee. We assign non-permanent employees to whatever pay we want regularly greeters.
Yeah.
We don't worry about what the policy says, because it says at the beginning, this only applies to permanent employees, but this person would be a permanent employee.
Would attract more people if you have that in there.
I did ask, um, Mary about her professionals, just because that feels like a somewhat similar job. And she's like, they hire in at around twenty one bucks an hour or two. She's like, but they get, she's like, it's about five percent a year. They get steps. And I'm like, well, that's about what our base scale is.
Yeah.
She thought the insurance, I mean, it's only half because they only work half time, but that would be pretty attractive.
Oh, yeah. A lot of.
Yeah.
Right. And then they'd have to decide if they want to, they could pay the other half and have insurance or they could take the cash.
Right. No, I like it. I think. No, I like it. I think, I think it'd be great. I hope we find the person that's the right fit.
And there, they would also get the 401K option would match.
I think we should. I think it's three percent of not very much money. And it feels like a nice thing.
Just trying to do this. Especially after a month of having boys with pneumonia. And she just went to the doctor today and haven't found out what she found out. Um, hey. Someone want to make a motion to approve with, I think we made a couple of. Traumatic or whatever.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? Need to force me with this. All those in favor, sorry.
I know those recordings exist.
Maybe I'll just go to Salt Lake City and hide my hotel room. Yeah.
Imagine not a skier.
Did you ski?
No.
I drove to Salt Lake City in April one year and there's some big mountains you can see right there.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the hotel's like right on Temple Square. Um, I just have written grandma. Okay, draft seasonal invasive species technician position description board to potentially approve new position description. I feel like it just said that. This is a different one.
You don't have a bottom bar to.
There it is. Okay. It gets minimized at the problem.
Yeah, I can always tell. When I see that lovely little bird, I know that Cory's having problems.
It's emotional support. Okay, so uh, as a caveat, we do not have this grant funding yet. We've had informal conversations that we expect to have this grant funding. Uh, well, half of this grant funding, but grand aid. So I would not plan to post this at this time.
Okay.
But I think that. I'm really hoping that we don't get to the March meeting without. It's gonna get pretty late. They haven't gotten around to that.
Yeah.
Um, I've been asking around and nobody's been able to tell me anything that there are changes. I believe this money is in P A money. So I think that's why there's some concern.
Okay.
So we won't post it until.
It's E P A money, but it's not clean water. That will not.
Right. They say that invasive species are not clean water.
Sorry. Okay, so at the bottom of the first paragraph, it should say uh, a mile each shift to remove silt, still grass rather than to removal.
Where's that?
The first.
Bottom of the first paragraph.
Why, why isn't it in blue? It ought to be underlined. Bottom line.
It says to. To removal.
But summer. And hiring seasonal like. That's blue line because it, yeah, there's an extra space there. Summer, they want you to put the in the back, but I don't, I don't think you should.
Okay.
I would disagree about the one. When I'm reviewing a document, I have to fix those blue lines before I can comprehend what's in the document. When I'm reading something on my computer screen at home. That's why I like the paper copy. It doesn't have the blue lines.
I didn't either.
Uh, you mentioned. Um, reimbursement for, for uh, travel, but you don't say. That um, uh, a vehicle's necessary.
Yep.
So the expectation is that they don't have to have a vehicle because we're gonna get a truck. Which we really need to make happen. So this is not just imaginary, but um. So we, it was, I talked about like, was I have an access issue or an equity issue that, you know, which means we doesn't need a vehicle to do this job, then. Why would we say they need a vehicle? So I suppose do we take out the mileage?
Well, is.
Oh, yeah, I guess you wouldn't.
Um. If you're not expecting them to provide their own vehicle, then yes, you wouldn't pay.
Or, or just say to uh, project sites. Uh, reimburse blah, 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 if using personal vehicle, because there may be a day occasionally.
Yeah, or they may prefer.
Or they may prefer to use their own. They might live two miles from where you're going and not make sense to come into town. So.
I like that.
So is this smartphone that they're gonna be using going to be provided by us?
No. We could give them a tablet in theory.
What would that do for them?
Yeah, I don't have a brand feeling.
Well, I, someone would have to create a hotspot for them to upload the stuff to D C. And I natural, I naturalist, I think, can save offline, but I don't know if it could save your GPS pointy.
Right.
I don't tablet, so I don't have the answer to that.
Now that I want to try to get into additional phones, log phones. So do we say then?
How important is that to your job? If they're doing it like last year, they wanted us to locate every single. Uh, Rosette. For context, we pulled seven thousand Rosette. So I strongly oppose that as a method, but. I don't know if they're gonna have the same reporting. Because we don't, yeah.
So it's like, ability to use personal smartphone.
Yeah.
That a reasonable, I mean, who doesn't have one at this point?
My husband.
I was gonna say.
But I can go into that separately.
There are a few people who don't have them, but not many.
I wish, I would still have mine if it worked, but.
I work with somebody who doesn't.
Mine doesn't like smartphone.
He wants two words.
Wants plural and wants plural.
He just wants to be the thinking, you know? Maybe it's supposed to be capitalized. Is that a brand name?
He really wants everything. Oh, because you said to use personal smartphone, not a personal. But I don't know if you actually. See, that one makes sense. Using a personal smartphone would be. Somehow makes sense there, but I feel. I had one today where I would change it to what I wanted and they would say it was wrong. Like I would change it back to the way I had it and it's.
It did occur to me, I was thinking about, oh, well, this night would scare people away. And then I thought, I think we're actually gonna probably find a big uptick in the qualifications of applicants.
Which language might scare them?
The, this, these positions that are pending on funding are originally stated in my government employment agreements are subject to determination of funding as revoked. Uh, be transparent. But I think, man, a lot of that kind of seasonal field work is gonna not happen this year because it's totally funded. And.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we may be surprised against.
I had that thought was something else, but I don't know if it's the ED position. Hey. We could have a motion on this or we could keep correcting or we can keep correcting or we're commenting acting motion, but. It's.
I move to, so the position is stretching.
I second.
Thank you, Jeff. Any further questions, comments, thoughts? If not, all those in favor?
Alright, alright.
Anyone opposed? No smart comments, me too. Hey, ongoing items. V A C D update. Um. We have made an offer um, for the executive director position. Still waiting to hear back, but it's gonna get accepted and whether we're gonna. Make that happen for sure or not. Um. But candidate, the team is. I think pretty excited about.
I was on pins and needles, maybe for an email all day and didn't get it.
Little bit of back and forth.
Okay.
Still.
Got it.
Um. I, I've mentioned this, we talked already, but Jill and the V A C D team are doing their best. Trying to stay on top of possible changes in funding, et cetera, coming out of D C. Um. You know, Jill. One of her strengths in my mind is her ability to stay calm in a storm and. Just. Boggles my mind how quick she can. Turn things around and process through them. And she's been doing this stuff for fifteen years, but and. You know, almost always looking out for her team, you know, with how she proceeds with things and trying to keep people calm and. Um. Thinking forward. Capacity building committee, V A C D's capacity building committee on which both Cory and I serve. Because we're on everything. Um, we're meeting tomorrow. I think it's already been mentioned. Consultants are doing a little bit of reporting out. I don't. If I remember right, we're not actively working on or acting. On their recommendations tomorrow so much as just kind of getting some sense of what those recommendations might be. And getting some sense of timeline and how those might move forward. And. Not having anything else jump out of my head about that. As I mentioned, I am heading on Friday to Salt Lake City for the N M C D annual meeting. There are three. Uh, resolutions being proposed that I got questioned about because. Um, they came out of New Hampshire. And. I have checked with Cory and a couple of the district managers on those. It's, I think the first year I've actually thought to talk to people in Vermont about. These resolutions, um. I have to give credit to a district manager who questioned me about. Having heard about these resolutions and wondering why they hadn't heard from me about them. It was not Cory. Um. Anyway. Uh, the one that I questioned Cory about is to do with some of the workings between F S A and. I guess districts having to sign off on prep or C R P contracts and. How that can bog things down and isn't always, doesn't always seem like the way maybe. The most efficient way for things to happen because oftentimes the districts, if I understand the situation right, aren't even actively involved. In those contracts, but for some reason. In the F S A, N R C S, whatever bureaucracy, bureaucracy. Um, this is how it's set up. So this resolution, I think, is just to put it in there somehow that there could be a waiver. For the district to get a waiver to not have to sign off on that. Um. One of the other ones, and I could look on my phone, but just it's something to do with. Logging and something about having um, equip change somehow to. Make some practice a little more accessible. Or paid for something and. I don't always check in with people on this because. I guess I feel with the many of these resolutions, it's just mostly seems like common sense. And if it's coming out of New Hampshire, I feel usually not. Fairly confident that it's something that would affect Vermont in the same way, so. Um. And just, I guess the other thing with V A C D or this whole resolutions thing. It was also brought to question why V A C D doesn't have a procedure for. Having resolutions go to N A C D. Um. And we're gonna work on that. But yeah, the general processes that like if it's some, if we had some concern. That we thought we could affect at the national level, then we would bring a resolution to V A C D. And then the V A C D would move it to either the Northeast Region Board or directly to N A C D. But districts, we could not ourselves directly put a resolution to N A C D. That's just how their process works. Um, any questions or other Cory, other thoughts? Anything you've heard rumbling with V A C D or?
Just uh, you know, the I R A funds being on hold. I did not know until Jill. Said that, that a significant portion of V A C D's funding is I R A currently. So I think there's a lot of uncertainty for a lot of V A C D staff right now. Particularly like program assistants and. Some of the resource specials and things are on the stage.
Right as we get a P A.
Yeah. So I don't know.
Um, yeah, and. It's gonna be interesting to see historically when N R C S has had a hiring freeze that has. Help districts in many ways, but whether that's going to happen this time or not. Will remain to be seen. Um, because this. Different administration within R C S and. Um, one other thing I've heard rumblings about. Excuse me, I don't remember where. Is some concept potentially of having. N R C S have a. Politically appointed head in Vermont like F S A has. Um, I haven't heard anything more than there's some thought that that maybe should happen and I honestly couldn't tell you where I heard that. Um. Except I think I've heard it in a couple of different places. I personally hope it doesn't come to that because. I think. That just puts a figurehead, another figurehead. Up there and then they're just trying to come in and learn the employees and. The employees kind of go with the flow and try to. Make things keep happening for the people on the ground and. In and around maneuverings, but. Personal thought on that. Um, I think that's it. That's enough. Monthly report on district activities. Commended Cory for changing this from district manager.
So this was, this was spurred by um. Heather and Isabel and May basically saying, hey, what if? The way it's worked is they emailed me their updates and then I compiled them all. And so instead they set up a lovely um, Google Doc. Yeah, and so in addition to like me not having to transcribe everything, it looks so much nicer.
I'm afraid you could have gotten something more scenic to start it off.
No, that brings a lot of comfort that the plant sale prep has always had bad photos.
Yeah.
That's why we were like, well, this is bad, like the, the. No, it's always industrial. It's always a dark room with like people in twigs.
Really expensive twins.
Yes.
Yep.
But we were cleaning out the, uh.
Gosh. Maybe it was a while ago.
It was a year. At some point, we were cleaning out the office somewhere and I, we found a whole package of pictures and that was long. I was like, hey, I know that person.
Yep.
And there was some of Linda, you had really short hair. At the plant.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, this would have been when we had it at high school. Yep.
I was like, this does not look like Green Mountain or is it definitely?
Nope, that's, that's been used to have it at high school.
I mean, they were cool. Pictures that were printed, I mean, that's. Um, I also like the company. I didn't.
I didn't.
Yeah. Birds break the element. Yeah.
That was cold.
Cold. It was a cold morning.
But there was.
There were thirty people showed up. It was zero degrees when it started.
Old birders.
Yeah.
I think we saw like six degrees.
I heard that, Logan.
Well, that's more than I think I would have expected, but was it like pigeons or?
Yes, some drunko losing.
There was a group and like Cory walked out with like two other people, like we all stayed behind. He like came back. I was like, it's something with a tail. There was a group, and like Cory walked out, but like two other people, like we all stayed behind, he like came back, I was like, it's something with a tail.
My burning thing is we have, I think the the starlings, eastern starlings or whatever, that's such. They're eating our cat food. We have a barn cat now, and the dish is out there for the cat, and we were thinking, man, it's this little fluffy cat, cat, barely a. A cat, and we're thinking, my God, how is he so small when he's, and all of a sudden, one day I realized that this, I heard the starlings doing that. Well, this is, I don't care. Anyway, I went over and the birds are eating the cat food, so I now have the cat carrier there, and I let the cat eat, and then after, I'm pretty sure the cat's done eating, I put the bird food. I mean, the bird food, the cat food in the carrier, initially I left the door open. But the birds were going in the carrier and eating the cat food, so number one, we have a really dumb barn cat because he's letting the birds eat his food.
Maybe he's eating the birds.
He's got a trap.
Yeah. He doesn't bird, he doesn't mouse, he's just so cute. His body is like this, his fluff is like, anyway. Um, more seriously, uh, what, you know, did I have about this?
So, yeah, we want the format changed, that was something that can be done. That's a different, you, it's just saying.
No, it was to do with wherever Cory mentioned the plant sale income or something, just wondering, that seems low?
I looked, it's um. It's pretty close to the top, right, yeah, um, we were at ninety, I would say ninety-two orders for about fourteen thousand at this point last year. Okay. So a little under, but not as, not as under as I feared.
But didn't we do like thirty or whatever thousand dollars?
We did forty.
Forty or, so I was.
I think it tends to come in.
Okay.
So.
You mean, if people stop seeing pictures like this blue sky and. It's been very cold, don't we usually get a hit as soon as it starts to warm up?
Yeah.
That people are suddenly, oh, yeah, barges. I was just concerned because we don't need any vertical cuts and.
No, to be fair, the plant sales, like, we can adjust our orders, I mean, we get to the end of March, and it's trickling along, we'll back off a lot of our orders and make those money.
Right.
I don't wanna do that.
Um, and the other thing was somewhere you mentioned Green River Watershed Alliance costs, that the district is taking over.
We're taking over the financial. Um fiscal sponsor, fiscal sponsor for the Green River Watershed Alliance, um, which Wyndham Regional Commission used to do.
Yeah.
The district did it before, I went, Martha, the district, and then she took it with her, and she went there, and she's been trying to get rid of it since then. Um, and because we were able to get that funding from the community foundation, um, that's twenty-five thousand dollars, um, and. They don't fund districts, they fund watershed groups, and there was a whole hangup last year where. The latter said like to support your work with the Green River Watershed Alliance, and so I didn't cash the check at first and sought some guidance from them. I started the monies for, and this went round and round with lots of people, and eventually they were like, you can take over supporting the Green River Watershed Alliance. Use whatever amount of money you need out of this twenty-five dollars and do that, and then use the rest for the regular strategic work that you proposed.
Okay.
So it, it's been worth it for us to do that.
Yeah, I, it just, I was like, uh, are we paid to do this?
Yes. Um, quite a lot of work was put into, um, figuring out what to do with the watershed lines. A couple of years, three years ago, C R C hired a consultant, they can review lots of people and. Trying to figure out what are the possible solutions to. Get this group to be freestanding. And what they eventually figured was that they don't wanna be freestanding, they don't want five-one-c-three status, they don't want employees, they just wanna be a, you know, a group of local folks that are. Excited about water, watershed. Education in our range, so. That's an easy enough thing for us to support, and it's sort of, it's pretty compatible with our existing programming.
Yeah. I was commiserating as I was reading the filing with W twos and ten ninety-nines. Except, I mean.
It gets better each year, because I feel like I have a better approach to it, but. It is a big job.
So you have the administrative assistant?
Do you do those through QuickBooks or?
The W twos, I physically. Print and mail. Um, the ten ninety-nines, QuickBooks has a, it's called ten nine, taxtenninetynine.com, that's like. Works within the QuickBooks system, so you're able to export the information directly, and it was sixty-some dollars to send all pretend. That was worth it. Just because ten ninety-nine is our pain.
I use TurboTax, but I.
Okay.
Do it for the whole farm X. Situation.
It's a great river hydrologist now.
Yeah, and. I don't know if you interacted with Matthew, Matthew took us out to lunch at the porch, which is very nice of Matthew Call, um, you know. Middle of eighty, he's like, so I've got good news and bad news, the good news is we would still like to have the program take place. Bad news is we don't have any money to give you. Let me know when we're made consistent. I hope that's better than. Yeah, I know, he said, I thought he was gonna tell me they were cutting the contribution, so.
Need to wrap up, so Jeff can go to bed.
Um. Jeff, did you come back from England with this?
Not that I'm aware. But it was pretty soon after, so. Maybe.
How long you been have had this spread?
I don't know what.
How long have you had this spread?
Well. Um. A couple of weeks.
Oh.
But I keep thinking it's gone, and then it comes back again, it's.
Yep.
You know, I've had days when I've been just fine.
Since the season, it's been a doozy, it's, you'd think it'd be cold enough that all the germs would be killed, but no.
I think the opposite happened, it forces everyone indoors, so they exchange the germs.
And there's been that, it's been warm and cold, and warm and cold, and warm and cold, and nobody's system adjusts well that way. Um, other comments, thoughts? Compliments? On the street port. As always, I wonder how you people find. Themselves, that of course we will talk about. Very busy. Very busy. So, yeah, you.
Um, not related to the report, but just FYI, I have two documents in here that they showed on pages sixty-seven, sixty-eight. Uh, Julia shared these at the Green River Retreat, the N R C D interstep, the N R C D staff retreat, um, and many of us were like, whoa. We didn't know these existed, these are really good, can we please get copies of these?
This, I saw at some point, and I was like. Yeah, that's amazing.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure folks saw it, so, because it's just, it's.
Oh, wait, this is the staffing, there's another one that Claire has done.
Oh, and it's like how the entities.
Right, with N R C C and V A C D and the state.
I have.
Like I have a clear. Every time Linda explains it, I learn a little bit more, and then I get a little bit more confused, so.
And just this, this. Like army of people is unbelievable.
Yeah.
That was where I saw Barry, Cory is assigned to us.
Oh, okay.
We have N R C C, Natural Resource Conservation Council.
That's our state agency.
So what's their relationship to V A C D?
So. N R C C is the state agency, so they're the government arm of conservation districts that the money flows to us through. V A C D is our member association, so it's our advocacy and. Help us with services, this is the general concept. Um. The lines are becoming more distinct.
Hmm.
As we've gotten bigger and. Yeah. N R C C is the one that's in in statute. Right. But not funded. Yeah, but, but it's, it's a, it's a legal entity.
It's like an umbrella organization for all the districts?
Yes, right. Um, V A C D can advocate. Because they're not a state. Entity.
Five oh one, C three or three C.
So each one can do different things. But they've. My opinion. It's never been, um. The fact that each of them can do different things and has different um. Legal skill sets, so to speak, has never really been used to full advantage. So. In my humble. Just always.
Technically, there's, there's something in statute like the administrative person would be funded, that's not happening for a long time.
This is not gonna be the year that it happens.
Yeah.
It doesn't feel that way so far.
No.
The lobbying has felt like climbing uphill harder than in the past.
Trying to think what somebody told me, that some natural resource committee is looking at opening up, I can't remember. Didn't sound good.
Hmm.
And whoever was saying it, I think was saying they were trying to explain to them that this is already covered in. Um. Hey, anything else? Well, the next meeting is already adjusted to, but I already, did I told you?
We did that last time.
Yeah. Yeah, I was gonna not say anything.
Trying to get out of it.
About the fact that it's gonna be gone.
It was coordinated up the last, well, it might be in the minutes. Better at the end of the.
Um, yeah, hopefully we're going, well, we have plane tickets to North Carolina and then Arizona to family.
Very north. Booming.
Where Arizona?
That's nice.
Coral Valley.
Where's that?
I'm not near Phoenix.
Okay.
An hour and a half in Phoenix or something.
Okay. I put that time in the southeastern.
I think if Phoenix is here and Tucson is. It's, it's, they're close, a little closer to Tucson.
Okay, it's a nice area. I really like Tucson.
My sister likes to send pictures, as I send pictures of snow, she sends pictures of desert practice and dry land and. Hot seventy degree days.
Yeah, but just think of their animals.
Yeah.
So she, they like it.
Ooh.
They're like, they're some of those, it's a dry heat, I'm like, I have fear.
We were there in April, three years ago, I think, I mean, it was ninety-seven, ninety-seven, April.
Well, I was there in March once, and it was that hot. I mean, like, you didn't wanna walk across the Walmart.
I was trying to burn.
I was trying to get a hat, but. Okay. Um, anything else?
So that March five date's okay with everyone?
I think so.
Just nothing.
We could say the other, but I could not say.
There you go.
Oh, it's the V A W Q P annual meeting as well.
Mm-hmm. Do you go with that?
We have.
We have, yeah. I didn't have it either, right?
I missed it, if it happened.
Yeah.
We went two years ago.
Yeah, it was in that awful space where you couldn't hear anything.
Yeah.
This time it's at Killington.
Oh, what?
Yeah.
That's fun, it's almost central, what are they thinking? Hey. Anything else? Yeah, oh. Sorry, that's always down. We, I think Cory, we need to.
Do I owe any minute?
Oh, the minutes are above the meeting day, never mind.
No, it's all talking to the last one.
Motion to approve the minutes from January eighth, and we can discuss any corrections or additions after the motions are made, if they're needed. So move. I'll take that. That's what this says, yep. So did anyone have any additions, corrections? I think I. Checked those online when you first sent them out and made some changes, but.
You did, you, in an email, so that you made changes.
Because they came out first, yeah.
Well, I thought we had to. What's the rule, within forty-eight hours?
We're supposed to post the draft in forty-eight hours, yeah.
Yeah, um. Anything? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hey, with one vote.
I was sorry, no.
I'm saying.
Oh, yeah, you weren't there.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't there. Someone told me, even if you're not at minute, at meetings, you can vote on minutes, does not make sense to me. But. But on the other hand, if you don't want to.
You don't have to.
I'm not telling you you have to, but I find it very bizarre that you could approve minutes that you weren't at the meeting, so you have no clue whether they're right or not.
It's crazy.
Uh, maybe Jeff watched it on his flight.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Jeff probably watched it.
Okay. Nothing else, motion to adjourn.
Removed.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor.
Almost killed him. Thank you all on screen.
Thank you, Ron.
Peter, I hope you had a good dinner.